Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 23, 2023 New Bern Board of Aldermen Meeting. The prayer tonight is going to be coordinated by Alderman Royal.
Thank you, Mayor. During the recent coronation of King Charles III, it was said that with the given of power comes the duty to serve. With that in mind, let us pray. Eternal God, I pray on behalf of those who are in positions of authority in our city that our commitment to serve will be marked by godliness and dignity. I pray for our mayor, the governing board, and all other local leaders, that we will seek the kingdom of God above all else and live righteously. I pray the decisions we make will be in the best interest of all of our citizens as we inspire and are directed by the Holy Spirit. And then, Lord, I thank you for bringing revival to our city, and I ask this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you would please stand as we pledge the oath of our country. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you would please call her on.
Alderman Prill.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kenzie.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
Okay, Board, I think I spoke with everyone and asked to have a slight change in the agenda, so Pastor Robert Johnson, if you would please join me, sir, at the podium. We have something we'd like to present you. Okay. Whereas since May of 1980, Robert Johnson has faithfully served as pastor of Ebenezer Presbyterian Church, the only African-American Presbyterian congregation in Craven County. This year marks 43 years of the dedicated service and earns him the title of the longest-serving pastor of Ebenezer Church. And whereas Reverend Johnson is a leader with the ability to unite people, he felt the calling of ministry on his life at the early age of nine, and later pursued a bachelor's degree in history and a master's of divinity degree. And whereas during his tenure at Ebenezer Church, Reverend Johnson was instrumental in establishing Religious Community Services, also known as RCS, and opened the church's fellowship hall to serve as the first soup kitchen. He served two terms as RCS' president, being the first black president for the organization, then transitioned to supervisor of the family home ministry. Reverend Johnson also monitored the 24-hour hotline and served as shelter manager. RCS played a part in New Bern's award as an All-American City in 1989, and Reverend Johnson joined city officials in Chicago for the event. And whereas his involvement in our community has been steadfast and extensive, Reverend Johnson was one of the founding members of the MLK Outreach Ministry in New Bern, chair of the Phoenix House Program that provides addicts with counseling and assistance during the recovery process, the longest-serving chaplain at Carolina East Medical Center, a member of the New Bern Interdominational Ministerial Alliance, president of the Duffy Field Phoenix Project, pursuing a mission to improve the surroundings and quality of life for Duffy Field residents, past president of the historic Dryboro Neighborhood Association, chair of Reviving Lives Ministries for 22 years, a member of the Craven County AIDS Task Force and Nush River Community Development Corporation, assistant chaplain for the Good Shepherd Homes of the Age, and was involved in an after-school program for students of JT Barber Elementary School who needed mentorship and after-school care. And whereas Reverend Johnson has answered the call countless times to New Bern's Board of Aldermen meetings with prayer, his prayers and guidance have extended outside of the meetings, and he has been a consistent source of encouragement for community leaders. And whereas while New Bern's elected officials, city staff, and citizens are honored to recognize Reverend Johnson's retirement and years of community involvement, it is with greater honor to acknowledge his friendship and impact on all of our lives. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey T. Odom, Mayor of the City of New Bern, on behalf of New Bern Board of Aldermen, do hereby proclaim May 8, 2023, as Reverend Robert Johnson Day. In the City of New Bern and recommended, citizens acknowledge the contributions that Reverend Johnson has made to our great city and community. Congratulations.
One thing I can say, let the church say, "Amen!" I am overwhelmed and blessed within my soul that I will love Mayor and this great historic city council and members of this great city. It's all fit in your heart to extend this awesome proclamation to me, and certainly I will continue to serve this great city because I love you and I love the citizens, and I continue want to be a voice, a positive voice, in this city for the glory of God. And my family and I will continue here, and so you'll be seeing more of me, hearing more of me, and know that I'm always available to listen to you, to counsel, just to be a servant. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to do that. That is something that we approved at our last board meeting, and felt like it was important that we do that publicly to show our respect and honor. So we'll move on to item number three, approve the agenda. Any questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Any questions, discussions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board on items four through six?
Make a motion to pass the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number seven, conduct a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2324. Mr. Hughes, any comments?
No, sir. Other than at the May night meeting, I did present the budget to the governing board. We did also adopt a resolution to call for the public hearing at this time. The budget has been posted on the city website, in the city clerk's office, and at the library for the public to review, and now it's time to call for that hearing.
Before I do so, we'll just let the public know that you did not receive an injury from debating over the budget.
That's right.
Just to be clear. Any comments from the Board before we open a public hearing? Okay, this time, we will open a public hearing for any comments relative to the proposed FY 2324 budget.
Where I'd like to speak.
If you would, just please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lisa Hubbell. I live at 2100 Rail Court. I don't have specific comments on additions or deletions to the budget line items. However, I'd like to address the proposed tax rate of .4159, and that is going to support this budget. The publicity over the tax rate decreasing, in my opinion, is a red herring because some property values have skyrocketed. The inflated real estate market has placed more of a burden on those citizens that own homes in what realtors have branded as affordable and desirable neighborhoods. Therefore, just some of us will be paying much more in taxes. I'll give you an example. Please take a look at handout one that I passed out. In the subdivision of Trolley Run, where I live, there are 61 homes. In 2022, three homes sold at the peak of the housing market at values we've never seen before in this neighborhood. After the revaluation, these 61 homes averaged a 78% increase in property value. That's 36% greater than the 42% the Tax Office reported as an overall average. At the .4149 rate, our neighborhood of 61 families combined will be paying greater than $20,000 a year over what we've been paying in city taxes alone. Now, please take a look at handout number two. Just around the corner in the Ghent neighborhood, directly adjacent to Trolley Run, a sampling of just one city block of homes, I've labeled those the 700-numbered blocks. The data shows their property values increased an average of 57%, and they'll be paying greater than $3,000 annually combined what they have been paying, and that's just 21 properties. If you travel just one block down, please take a look at handout number three. I have labeled those 600-numbered blocks. Their property values increased an average of 62%, and they will be paying greater than $5,000 annually combined what they have been paying, and this is just a sampling of 17 properties. To put things in perspective, I have also included data from one square block of properties in the historic district. This is handout number four. As you can see, property values increased an average of 33%, and they'll be paying just over $6,000 annually combined over 21 properties. Now, I've spent time talking about property revaluations to make my point. I don't believe the revaluation was completed in a fair and equitable way, and we as individual property owners have an avenue to appeal. What you can do is set the tax rate to what we as citizens can manage until the next revaluation. The proposed tax rate of .4159 is still too high. Kick this budget back for revision. Request each department look at the wants versus needs. Each department needs to tighten their bill. Cut the fat. To put it simply, this proposed tax burden of .4159 is too great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Come on up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is, excuse me, Jody Sherman. I live at 2048 Street in Trolley Run, and I have one question, actually, and it has to do with a line item in the budget called "Add valorum Taxes." And for people who don't know what that means, valorum taxes have to do with the assessments on the properties. So I don't know if anybody took the time to look it up, but looking at the numbers from 21 to 2021 to 2023, the increases are less than $1 million. The increase you're looking for from '23 to '24 is $3 million. Why? Can somebody answer that?
I will attempt to answer that, and the manager can chime in. Mr. Manager, I believe roughly 70% to 80% of our budget is personnel cost.
That is correct.
And the city completed a salary study, was it last year?
Yes, it was.
And it came back that our overall positions were about 10% to 12% below the market average. So this board made a decision about six months ago to implement half of that recommendation of the salary study, and then made a good faith effort that when the budget came around, we would implement the second half of that salary study. So that's where a lot of the increase that you're seeing is coming from, is from personnel.
But this has nothing to do with personnel. This valorum tax, it has to do with the assessments of properties.
True.
So where does personnel fit into this?
Personnel is an expense, and the valorum taxes are revenue, and the state of North Carolina requires municipalities and counties to pass a balanced budget, so in order to cover all of the expenses, we have to increase the revenues to cover that amount.
Okay, but not all of the other line items in the budget that are revenues, the increases are nowhere near that dollar.
Mr. Manager, you want to give a explanation on sales tax, how that's projected?
Yeah, so, and I'll talk a little bit about valorum taxes. That's the single largest amount of tax revenue the city does receive, probably the second outside of fees and charges from our enterprise funds is going to be sales taxes, and those are, we usually get those about every three months, three months behind on that. And that's based on what you see in the, on your information, what we projected for the sales tax, that's based on the best conservative estimate. So as we were looking at balancing this budget, yes, the salaries were the biggest expense item we saw, and that's why we made the recommendation on the tax rate with the valorum taxes.
So you're saying that the revenue generated from the assessments is going to be for salaries?
Yes, that is the main reason that that went up.
Okay. But none of the increases for the other revenue generating items?
We made the most conservative estimates we could, based on the information we had on the others.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Tyndall. I live in New Bern. I do not live in city limits, and...
What's your address, Ms. Tyndall?
I'm not required to give my address. I live in New Bern.
Okay.
So, and then I was informed that last year, cameras were going to be on the budget last year. Did they make it on the budget?
Mr. Manager?
Would you want to refer to which cameras?
Cameras in City Hall.
Yes.
They did?
They did make it in the budget, and as a matter of fact, our crews are installing them, several of them have been installed in this building, and they're being installed in the new annex as well.
Okay.
I don't know if they're live yet, but yes, they are going.
That's great. That's really good to hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hello. My name's Bob Kent. I live at 2058 Street. Lisa Hubbell and I, Lisa came by my house and went through all of this, and we tried to come up with all the different questions that may have been, you know, that we think of from there. One of the things that I did not hear is how and when we would hear a response to you on what she has submitted, because I heard nobody say anything in response to that. Can you reply to that, please?
Sure. Most likely, when the public hearing closes, the Board will deliberate. That's typically what would happen.
Okay, so you'll have an answer this evening, then?
We'll talk about it. I don't know if we'll have an answer for you, but we will talk about it for sure.
Okay, so then when can we expect an answer, then?
We will...
Because your budget's going to be laid in stone here not too long, right?
It's going to be voted on at our next board meeting.
Okay.
So from now until two weeks, when we have our next board meeting, that's when we would actually vote on the budget.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. A pleasure knowing most of you all, mostly as friends, and some of you have known as the campaign trail. My name is Emmanuel Ruiz. I live at 723 Lake Tyler Drive here in New Bern. That's okay. It's a pleasure to see you all again. Now, no longer on the campaign trail, but seeing you guys in office. More of a point of clarification, from what I've heard from some of the interviews, the mayor is online, with my conversations with Alderman Brinson, from my general understanding is we're looking at a general 4-cent tax increase, but a general 6-cent tax decrease overall, once you look into all the numbers. And then the possible proposition, I mean by some of you, though not the entire board as a whole, is instead no tax increase, but instead just taking it from the general fund, since we have such a large savings account. Is that correct?
So the proposed budget pulls how much from the general fund, Foster?
So, on the proposed budget, it's basically $49 million for the general fund. The remaining is approximately $100 million for the enterprise funds, which are self-supporting.
So overall, would that eliminate? Is that still with the 4-cent tax increase?
That is with the 4-cent tax increase, yes.
Just from my own personal point of advocacy, as a no-tax kind of guy, if we can eliminate that 4-cent tax increase while being able to go into the savings account by not going too far, I think that's the best solution, giving everyone what they need, allows the city to grow. I would also caution the Board to avoid the headache I'm having to go through with Havelock right now, with the assistant commissioner corps there, with their current situation. The City of New Bern is a much better situation. We are in much better hands right now. I have the full support and full backing here of the mayor. I think we're going to do well with whatever budget you guys come up with, but if we can eliminate these taxes altogether, bring it back to no tax increase for the rest of us, I think we'd all be in a much better position. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments?
If there's no more comments, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Manager, just a couple of comments to kind of get this discussion started. You reached out to me a few months ago and asked me my thoughts on the budget and the direction, and I told you that revenue neutral was my choice. Also understand that the city is also not immune to the inflation that everyone is dealing with right now. Fuel, we buy it by wholesale, but it's also costs more when we buy it by wholesale than what it did prior. So there's some expenses that we're having to incur, and obviously, the salary study was a gigantic piece of that. I believe in this proposed budget, you have the second half of the salary study implementation built into this.
That's correct.
As well as a COLA and a merit increase for this budget, which is something separate from the salary study. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you know the value, sir, of the merit and the COLA that is in this budget?
Right now, for the full year, that is approximately $1.2 million of an increase. The salary study complete implementation is approximately $2.4 million.
Okay. So if the city were to delay the COLA and the merit increase right now when we adopt the budget, and maybe revisit that at the end of the year, when we have an opportunity to see how the sales tax revenues come in, what is that valuation if we were to delay those two items?
If we delayed that for, an example, six months and implemented that in January of the new year, that tax rate could go to .4030 cents.
And one cent is worth about $400?
$471,000.
Okay. That's the comments that I wanted to make to get started off. So, Board?
Yes, I do have some comments. When we was going through our budget deliberations, I made a suggestion to this board because I felt that we should wait until to see what steps and what was going to happen with Craven County. We all know that there was a 42% increase in tax values throughout the county, city, and the county, as I last heard, the county is going to stay, they're not going to raise their taxes, they're going to stay with the revenue neutral rate. And that's what I feel that this city, we as a city, should do for our citizens. We should stay at the revenue neutral rate, which is .3734. So when we was going through budget deliberations, we had our division heads come up here, department heads come up here, and they warned us about the increase, the anticipated increases in our water rates, sewer rates, and solid waste rates. So with me, I have a problem, that is additional fees, which we as a city, the price of goods and services is going up, so we got to pass that rate on, that fee on to our customers. So that's going to be added, an added fee to our customers, along with this proposed budget right now, is increasing the taxes to .41. I have a problem with that, and I'll let this board know that. I have a problem with it. I think we, as a board, we should leave our taxes right now and see how our taxes, how the taxes, our revenue taxes come in, and then if we have to raise the taxes later on in the 24-budget year, then let's do so. But at this point in time, with all the other costs and fees that we're going to be passing on to our citizens, I think we should leave the tax rate at the revenue neutral rate, which, as I said before, .3734. I think our citizens can somewhat manage that more so than going up 4.4, 4.25 cents on the $100 value. That's a lot to some people. Some people, it's not, but some people, it is. And I look at, we're here to serve our citizens, and if we can serve our citizens in a way that we want to be served, I think we're all, it'll be a win-win situation for everybody. But we have, we have a healthy general fund balance. So let's, why can't we take some of that money from general fund to balance our budget so we won't have to raise the tax rate for our citizens? That's all I'm going to say at this point. I could go on and on, but that's all I need to say at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Best. Just want to make a comment, and I'll probably defer to Alderman Brinson. With respect to the county's budget, just everyone's aware, the county's receiving $8.5 million in the opioid settlement funds, so they have a different revenue stream that also allows them to do some things. And I believe the number was 17, that they were increasing their headcount within the city, or the county government was about 17. So they've gotten real creative in how they've been able to cover that cost as well. The last comment that I'll make with respect to Alderman Best's comments, the fund balance, you're right, it's healthy, it's around 50% the last estimate we saw. I would also caution us to remember that when Hurricane Florence came through, we dipped below 8%, and we all, at the time, was on the board, received a letter from the LGC that we were below that number. And if you think about the fund balance as a savings account, when you deplete that funds, unless you start replenishing it, it's got to get built back up, or it won't be there the next time. So that's the only thing I would caution you, and I'll probably agree with you that, yeah, I think right now, that's probably what we need to do, is tighten the belt on the budget a little bit, pull some more from fund balance, and let's reevaluate this in December. But I do think that it's going to be very hard to do any of that if you move forward with the COLA and the merit increase in this budget as well.
Mayor, I do want to give you a point of clarification. Based on our last audit, our fund balance, general fund, is approximately 50%. That includes restricted and unrestricted. So unrestricted fund balance is at about 37%, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, approximately 26.5 million of unrestricted. So restricted for fund balance, that includes things like maybe some FEMA grants that we have outstanding, ARCA funds and things like that that we have already designated. So just wanted to make...
Is Stanley White funding in that restricted amount?
It should be, yes.
Okay, so that's an opportunity where we have the ability to pay for that as we go, but you could also finance that, meaning it's a long-term asset to provide some cash flow.
But is it, currently, right now, is it about $3.5 million that we have not received from FEMA? Or a little bit more than that?
It's probably a little bit more than that.
Okay.
There's several things that have not been closed out, so we're working to try to get an update on where things stand.
Okay.
We can give you an update at the next meeting.
I think it is 4.5.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with Alderman Best on this. I am supportive of revenue-neutral budget. I am supportive of pushing off the COLA and merit increase, and I do think we can take the remaining 800-some thousand out of fund balance. As stated here, I mean, the revaluation is half of the equation when it comes to add the valorum taxes. The other is our rate, and I think with the rates that Alderman Best brought up, that we know, we know we're going to end up increasing sewer, we know we're going to end up increasing solid waste, we know we're going to end up increasing electricity. I just don't think that all of our citizens can afford all of those increases, particularly even in one year. So, you know, my thought process is, again, I'll reiterate that we need to have revenue neutral... the lower taxes, the other is our rate, and I think with the rates that Alderman Best brought up, that we know, we know we're going to end up increasing sewer, we know we're going to end up increasing solid waste, we know we're going to end up increasing electricity. I just don't think that all of our citizens can afford all of those increases, particularly even in one year. So, you know, my thought process is, again, I'll reiterate, that we need to have a revenue neutral budget, and by taking out COLA and merit, and I think the remaining could come from fund balance.
Just to be clear, I don't think there was an electric rate increase proposed in the budget.
No, there was not, not in this budget. That's not what, but as was presented during our budget hearings, we are anticipating with a presentation for those increases that will come later this year.
In the electric?
Yes.
The other board members have comments?
I'll just, a couple of comments. The resident that made the presentation with the assessed values, I would hope and assume that you will be attending the Board of Commissioners, County Board of Commissioners' meeting, budget hearing, because they are the ones that need to hear the comments about the assessed values. And I, you're shaking your head, so I assume correctly that you understand that process and that you will be there and talking to them.
Yes, sir.
There you go. I'm, I think, on a little bit different page than those members of the board who have voiced comments so far this evening. I take a little bit more of a pragmatic or an incremental approach to budgeting, and that comes out of having been in a city manager position for 30 years. Trying to keep the tax rate at a constant level, year after year after year, is a mistake. As a municipality, we incur cost increases, just like all of us do in our own households, and we have to make adjustments to our income stream to address those issues. Inflation is very high right now. We are feeling the pressure of those inflationary cost increases, and to arbitrarily talk about a revenue neutral tax rate is doing nothing more than just kicking the can down the road. And a year from now, when we are going through this budget process, once again, chances are the same individuals sitting up here who are arguing for a revenue neutral tax rate are going to once again argue that we have to hold the line on the tax rate and not increase it. And the organization then slips a little farther behind, a little farther behind, the example being that previous boards have allowed compensation to our staff to fall behind what the market said that they should be. Kicking the can down the road, this board had to bite the bullet to try to bring the staff up to a compensation level that is competitive with those municipal entities that we are competing with for talent. I don't believe in kicking the can down the road. I'm not sure the proposed tax rate is the answer. Alderman Brinson and I will be meeting with the city manager this week to talk about some suggestions, some ideas, on how we might be able to address some of the proposed increase and back off of the proposed tax rate a little bit. So, long story short, I'm not in favor of a revenue neutral tax rate. I understand that politically it's a nice gesture, realistically, though, I think it's a mistake for the board to go down that route. I would be more in favor of an incremental tax rate increase to at least keep the organization moving forward in trying to cover the cost increases that we are facing. So with that, I'll just, I'll turn it over to somebody else.
Thank you.
I know you asked me these figures a few minutes ago, what is just the cost of the merit if we do the merit raises?
Merit and COLA?
Just merit. You have it separated?
The merit is 2%?
400,000, 396,000.
For merit only?
Merit only.
Okay. And the COLA would be?
576,000. This is general fund.
So my question to you, Mr. Manager, is we've just had some serious conversations about salaries and how far behind we were from the other cities, our benchmark cities. If we don't provide the, I know we're going to do the rest of the salary survey, but if we don't provide the, at least the COLA, will that just make us go behind again?
We'll be behind.
I mean, could we do just, could we do the COLA in July and save the merit raises until January?
We're happy to do anything the board gives me direction to do. I will tell you this, we, and when we polled the cities around us in terms of cost of living, we're proposing the smallest amount of the other cities. So that tells us, even with the salary survey, we're trying to get back up to the same level that our competitive municipalities are, but when we see the COLAs that they're doing, we're still having an issue with personnel across the board nationwide and local government. We're still going to be behind, but we've got to be realistic. There's only so much we can afford. And I know that the tax issue is extremely sensitive to our citizens, I feel the pain as much as the rest of our citizens and you do as well, and so it's something that we seriously have to look at. And looking forward to hearing what you'd like me to do.
I just don't want to get back into the position when we had employees leaving right and left as hard as they can, and then we're having to spend all this money to retrain and hire new employees. We finally got them their pay raises that they need. I think the turnover rates probably slowed down now that they received the raises. I just don't want it to start back up in July. Every one of them has been expecting the COLA as well as the start of the merit system. I don't have a problem delaying the merit system, but I certainly don't want to see New Bern fall behind again and we start losing employees like we lost a year ago.
The city, right now, we've taken over so many new streets and given up the rights for the bridge. I think those are one of the things, the maintenance of the city, that's a very expensive cost as well. I haven't heard anything discussed about that part. We're talking about merit raises, cutting taxes, but what about the operating cost? How much is that going to cost us this time around with all the streets that's been added on that is up now for repair? So when we received those streets, they were in pretty bad condition. So are we looking to suffer and let the streets go bad, the service that we provide? I know we talk about a healthy fund balance, but you could have a catastrophic come in at any given time and just wipe us out. So it's a lot of things here that has to be considered when you run a business. I understand that we all don't know what, no one can pay, it's none of nobody's business, but when you have a business that you have to run, that you have to maintain for each and every individual, I think that's something that needs to be really looked at, the numbers really considered. And I think that's an important factor to me. I've been on the board for 15 years, I've seen the streets that was in bad condition, then we add more streets, you know, people complain about services. I mean, would you like for your service to go down, or you like for your services to go up? What are you willing to pay for? You know, you want more services or less services? That has to cost, someone has to pay for this. I know it's a touchy situation, but it's something that has to be done and spoke about. So are you willing to step up to the plate and do the right thing and pay your way? That's a call that I have to make along with you. It's a decision has to be made, and the decision has to be made the right way to take care of the city. You can lose employees, not have them, have bad streets, have just poor service. I mean, it's a call that we all have to do together. So it's up to us to make it happen.
In reference to the 3% COLA and the 2% merit, I know we were going to implement the second phase of the salary, employee salary study. I don't have a problem with the 2% merit, but I do have a problem with both of them across the board. You're talking about 5% across the board, and that's for all employees. That's a bit much for me. Now, yes, as Alderman Astor said, we need to keep our employees, so we need to pay them, and I don't have a problem with the 2% merit, but I don't think that both of these should be handled and given to the employees across the board. 5%, 5% to a high-salary employee is a lot of money, as opposed to 5% to a lower-salary employee. So there's a big difference there when you calculate the monies with these percentages that we want proposed on giving our employees. That's it.
Yeah, you got to remember, too, the merit raise, not across the board, give me, I mean, it's a raise that their supervisor or department head says that they deserve because they're doing outstanding work. If they're doing their job, they typically don't get a merit raise, that, yes.
So the merit raise is tied to the annual evaluation, and it really depends on how an employer ranks. If they do an exceptional job, then most likely they would get a 2% increase. If they're middle of the road, then you're looking at a 1% increase. That's, it really all depends on how they're rated by their supervisor.
And if they're doing their job, they get 0%, correct?
That's correct.
I mean, it's just to recognize our employees that go to the next level.
Well, you know, this is kind of bad to say, but if you have an employee that's just there doing their job, and that's all they're doing is doing their job, and it seems like we, that division head, department head has a problem, we need to find somebody to fill that position to do that job.
That's what they're getting paid to do, is do their job. And that's why they get merit raises if they go above and beyond their job.
So you just want somebody to sit there all five, 10, 15 years, just barely doing a job when you can employ somebody that's going to go above and call with duty to do their job?
If they go...
And I'm all for employees, now, don't get me wrong.
If they go above and call with duty, that's when they are rewarded with their merit raise.
Yeah, well, I agree, merit, employees should get a merit raise if it ain't under the .5 cents. If they don't get 1%, they should get something for showing up, doing their job, and that's my opinion. But now for is the COLA? Yeah, but I still have a problem with a 5%, with 3% COLA across the board. No, these higher-salary employees, I love y'all dearly if you're listening, the higher-salary employees, I don't think that it's fair. And that's just my, that's my opinion on that, I just don't think it's fair.
Alderman Brinson?
Austin, can you remind us how much we increased the street paving budget by, during our budget workshop?
We increased that by 200,000. 200,000. On average, we will put about $400,000 into that line, and this year we increased that by 200,000 to 600,000.
To 600,000, that's what I thought.
And what would that get us, three miles, two miles?
It probably won't get us in terms of miles, since there's so many areas that we've got to patch and things like that.
Just a comment, my philosophy, I've been, I think this is either my ninth or 10th budget now that I've been a part of, and I've never voted for a tax increase, and I don't intend on doing it this time. My philosophy on government is you grow your base and not grow your rate. And for the last nine years or so, that's worked out pretty well for us. And I talked about replenishing that fund balance. So we're statutorily required, as I mentioned earlier, to pass a balanced budget, meaning that if we're saying we've got X amount of expenses, we have to come up with Y amount of revenue, and those numbers have to match. So if we were to put more money or pull money out of fund balance to make that balance, if history proves itself correctly, we continue to grow our economy, and we see an example like the old Pepsi plant that's out on MLK, that was a brick building that's been torn down, and now there's a Royal Farms gas station going there. I'm going to do something, I've been meaning to do this for a while, I'm going to take a historical picture of what that looked like before, and I'm going to take a picture of what it looks like when it gets open, and I'm going to calculate what tax revenue that generates for all of us that we're able to spend. So oftentimes, we've kind of discussed this tongue-in-cheek about new restaurants coming, and someone's saying, I really wish the new Mexican restaurant was a steakhouse versus a Mexican restaurant. But the reality is, is that new Mexican restaurant has contributed more to the tax base than that vacant, empty property was. And that's the philosophy that I hope we would all have, is we want to make sure that our vacant buildings become occupied, older structures get improved, and we actually bring in more tax revenue that way versus increasing our tax rate. So what I would propose, and what I've said earlier, is we delay this COLA and merit until December, we see what the sales tax revenue looks like, because again, I think last year was one of the record years we've had with sales tax revenue generation. So we're bringing more money in than what our budget last year said we were going to bring in, which means we're going to put money into the fund balance, it's going to be a net increase in our fund balance this year based off of our growth that we've experienced. How much that is, I don't think we know that number yet, but we'll know at the close of the books.
And to my sales tax? I think it was mentioned that it was, what, 11.7 million in sales tax? So again, that adds to our revenue as well.
Question again, COLA is what percentage?
3%.
3%, and COLA is across the board?
COLA is across the board, that's correct.
And merit is what, again?
Merit is based on how you're evaluated in the performance of your job duties, and so if a merit isn't implemented and it's 2%, not every employee would get 2%. Some may get 1%, some could get 1.5%, some could get a half of a percent. It just all depends on how they rate on their individual evaluation.
And that's left to the discretion of the supervisor.
It's based on the scores that the supervisor grade their employees on, and that information is compiled and tabulated by our finance department and the human resources department in terms of what the rate would actually be.
Any more questions or comments? Mr. Manager, are you looking for some direction?
I am looking for some direction, yes.
My direction is the same as it was months ago, revenue neutral, find a way to make it happen. That's my stance.
And that's my stance as well. I think we should go with the revenue neutral rate for the taxes.
Have y'all had conversations with the city manager about revenue neutral? Because he's, we sent him back, he cut about all the budget, he knew how to cut out of it, and now you're wanting to cut all this more out of it? I mean, there's only two things that's going to happen here. We either have to make more money or cut services. Which service do you want to cut?
I think we have already made our recommendation that we cut merit and COLA and take the rest...
Well, that's not a service.
Exactly, that's what I'm, that's my point. We're not asking you to cut any services. That's exactly my point.
And I agree with the mayor, I'd like to see what the revenues coming in is going to be like for, you know, for our taxes and sales tax.
So right now, I just want to make sure what I'm hearing is, cut COLA and merit, go to revenue neutral, and basically with the remainder, look at balancing with fund balance, which is, Tony, can you give me a estimate on what that would be? If we pulled COLA and merit, what is our shortfall?
That's the point, that's the point four oh three, correct?
That, that is if it was implemented, if the cola and merit were implemented in January of twenty twenty-four. If it's not implemented at all, and that reduces-
Yeah, that's the number that we need, because I don't wanna make an assumption that we're gonna do it in January till we see the revenues. And again, I mean, let's be honest, there's, there's an art to this game. And it's courtesy of the General Assembly of passing a, a balanced budget. Do they, are they required to do that?
Yes, they are.
They are? Have they passed a budget every year?
They have passed a budget every year, the governor hasn't necessarily signed it every year.
Mr. Hughes, you're looking for direction. Well, you've heard from three members of the board, you haven't heard from four members of the board. So let me chime in. I'm not necessarily in full agreement with your proposed tax rate of forty-one cents. I'm also not in favor of a revenue neutral tax rate. So I'm somewhere in the middle. I don't have enough information, as I indicated, that I will be sitting down with you in a couple of days, maybe even tomorrow, I forget what day it was.
Thursday.
Um, to talk a little bit further about, um, the budget and about the numbers. So pencil me in on a tax rate increase, I just don't know what that means at this point in time.
I, I just think you can, I, I'm just real concerned about our employees. I mean, I, 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 I think you, you're opening up a can of worms and we're gonna start losing employees again.
It, it is a valid concern. Uh, I believe that Rocky Mountain announced a couple of weeks ago that their starting police salary is sixty thousand dollars. But I've said this comment before, there is a value of living in New Bern and working for the city of New Bern versus some of these competitive cities.
Yeah, and there's also a value of making twenty thousand dollars a year or more in salary.
Well, that, that's, that's the question that every individual has to ask himself. It's something that everybody in this audience that's been in the workforce has had to make decisions throughout your career. You know, I can tell you right now, I've passed up numerous promotions. Uh, one was to Texas, and it was quite a bit of money. And I'm thankful that I stayed right here in New Bern.
And as a reminder, we did pass the thirteenth holiday. So, you know, not all benefits are included in this budget.
So three of you, I think the manager needs to hear from you, so we can move on to the next item, so he has some direction.
I definitely will support, of course, we already voted for the salary increase. And I agree also, if we could wait and delay the cola and the merit, and let us see where, what direction we go in.
Yeah, you can, you can do what you want to, don't mess with their employees and their salaries.
You got enough, so Alderman McKenzie, if you wanna take a pass, you're more than welcome to. Unless you just wanna voice your opinion on where you stand.
I'm for the cola. I don't want to lose the employees, what we have actually set up for them. And I like to wait and see what's gonna happen, okay?
Uh, Mr. Manager, um, I will take my budget book with me this week, whenever I travel. And, um, I will send you a list of items that I feel like should be considered that could be cut from the budget. You can do with it as you see fit. Anyone else?
Since, since we're talking about budget here, um, I, I just want to, to implement this. You know, I haven't received any numbers back. Um, it was, we discussed it at the budget, um, about refurbishing and additional fire trucks. So what was the outcome of that?
So we currently have approximately one point two million dollars in the budget for a new fire truck, refurbished two other fire trucks. We did get quotations back, uh, on what it would cost for two fire trucks. It ends up being approximately one point nine million dollars.
Per truck?
No, for two, for two trucks.
For two trucks?
For two trucks. Gonna take two plus years to order. So the current plan was to, to keep that budget number in place, come back to the governing board in the new budget year, and go through the budget amendment process.
So we're gonna purchase two trucks, plus refurbish two?
No, no. Purchase two trucks, refurbish one, it's an amount of fifty thousand dollars. The, the, the second truck could be re, the first truck could be refurbished to approximately four hundred and some thousand dollars. We wouldn't do that, we would end up selling that and then buying another truck.
Is that gonna be capital?
That will be capital.
All of it, even the fifty thousand dollars?
That, that's correct, so, uh, we would, um, basically get a loan for those proceeds, but we would end up going to fund balance to pay the deposit down on that. Traditionally, it's depending on, there's a range that we could, that we could pay on, based on whatever vendor we choose, whether that's twenty-five, fifty, or seventy-five, or even a hundred percent of purchase of that. Uh, you get a little discount, uh, if you purchase, uh, uh, if you, if you pay ahead of that. We get a loan, uh, if, if the appropriate time to, to cover that once the truck's been here.
And I think I know the answer to this, but you already have a growth percentage built into the sales tax and the ad valorem tax, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Cause we are seeing some tremendous growth. Alderman Bresson's area, there's two new apartment complexes going up. Alderman Astor's got hundreds of apartments and doctor's offices and other things that's being built. So all of those things are gonna help contribute towards this.
You know, I didn't want to bring this up, but I, I, I have to. Let's talk a little bit about FEMA.
Okay.
Let's talk about the CAT A work and the CAT D work, and all the money that the city has spent, and we're waiting on closeouts to get that money back. I know of one basin that's nine hundred thousand dollars, that we need to close it out. You know, and I can't even begin to tell you how many other, uh, that may be out there. I, I, I think if, to, to generate some funds here, we need to get someone to, let's start closing out some of these accounts. Let's start closing out some of these project worksheets, and let's start collecting money. Cause if we close them out today, it may be six months before we see the money. But if we close them out today, it's a good chance we'll see the money by the end of the year. So, you know, we need to get this CAT A work done, we need to get the CAT B work done. You know, and we need to start getting, closing out some of these, these FEMA projects. And, and let's get some money back into our account as a result of that. I mean, that's a, there's a lot of money out there.
And, and we said earlier, when, when one of you were talking about FEMA project, we're gonna, we're gonna have an update for you at the next meeting where things stand and what the, what the progress is on that.
Yeah, I think you said, I would say a three point five million, but it's a little bit more than that.
That's right, so we'll have an update for you on where everything stands.
Anything else?
So what was the final decision here? It was four to three? To revisit this budget and take out?
I heard four, you, Alderman Bresson, Alderman Royal, and myself.
Okay.
Alderman Astor, I think, said, as long as you don't mess with the employee's salary, do what you wanna do.
Do what you want to, just don't mess with our employees. I've just received an email talking about from some of the employees already. Yeah.
Well, it's like, we're gonna let the employees beware. Now, we are going to implement at one point two million, the second phase that we discussed. Um, but, and I'm all for the employees, I want them to get-
But you, you know-
I want them to get the two percent merit, I want them to get the three percent cola. But I think right now, we need to wait a little, because, you know, we don't know how our tax revenue is, what it's gonna be like, and what our sales tax is gonna be like. I just think that that would aid to, to the, the cost of giving our employees those, those raises. I'm all for the employees, but I just think we need to wait right now.
Just, I think we're starting off on the wrong foot after such a giant leap forward for our employees. And now, they were all expecting that, cause that was one of the, the things they talked about. Does that still mean you're gonna, what are you gonna, you're gonna cut our merit raises out or our cola raises out as a result of this? And we don't know, you know, this, this is gonna still, this is gonna happen.
I never said cut it out, I'm saying let's wait. I've never said let's cut it, period. I'm saying let's wait.
Well, I'm okay, I'm okay with, with waiting on the merits, we've done that before.
Yes, exactly.
But I, I would certainly like to see the cola take effect. I mean, what's, inflation is eight percent?
Approximately eight point five percent.
Eight percent inflation, I mean, employees have to buy groceries too.
You know what, I could sit up here and I could really go off on the deep end right now, when this board didn't even want to give us a raise, it's all going, but yet, we're talking about rec, we're talking about, we're employees too, well, not in a, in essence, we're not employees, but, you know what I'm saying?
Uh, I would, I would offer that I think this discussion has highlighted the need for not a multi-million dollar strategic plan, but a plan that looks more broadly at things. And I'll give you one example. Foster, we have twenty-seven parks in the city of New Bern. And an average city our size would typically have, how many?
Seven or eight.
So there are things that people enjoy that come with a cost. And those are things that need to be looked at, cause there's maintenance of those parks, there's upkeep, there's things that have to be done that are all factored in this budget, because you have to have employees to maintain those parks. And it's a decision that really the citizens need to chime in on. Do they enjoy twenty-seven parks worth a tax increase, potentially?
You close all the parks, the city parks in my district, how about that? And Francis Bresson, he closed all his too.
I don't have any of mine either.
It's just, uh, it's, it's something that needs to be considered. And, and my last comment, I promise on this topic, is, I know this board and the previous board, we have discussed a fire station on the west end of the city. I know that there's a need. There's also a cost. And based off of these new projections of revenue, it would be about three cents, according to my calculation, to man and operate another fire station. So we will have this discussion again in the future at some point in time. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to item number eight. Consider adopting a resolution closing specific streets for downtown street cafes and entertainment. Presenter, it looks like Ms. Warren is going to present this. And thank you to everyone who spoke, uh, for the public hearing. It's actually, uh, pretty rare, we usually have our budget public hearings and there's nobody that speaks. But I guess when you say there's a tax increase, that's how to get more community engagement, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so Swiss Bear has made a request to close downtown streets, the two hundred block of Middle, three hundred block of Middle, a portion of it, and three hundred block of Pollock, um, for street cafes. This is gonna be on Friday nights, beginning May twenty-sixth through June thirtieth, and then every Friday night in the month of September. This will add up to about eleven total Friday nights of street closures downtown. We provided several pieces of information from Swiss Bear regarding, um, businesses that were either for or against the closure. Um, there were also, I think, a letter that was submitted from the Rivertown Ballroom, um, with their concerns. So whatever questions you may have regarding this closure, um, if you have any concerns, more than welcome to answer them.
Alderman Bresson?
I've, I've just got a question. So on the form that, um, was put in, there's a section where it says food vendors, they're not requesting any food vendors, does that include food trucks or not?
Yes, that would be food trucks.
So there's no request for food trucks?
No.
Okay.
So, uh, Ms. Warren, how many, you have, um, a petition signed by some of the, uh, business owners from downtown?
We do have, um, emails to that effect from those businesses that were on the streets that are requesting to be closed. And I think Ms. Harakal also put out letters to the residents. Did you have any?
Hi, Lynn Harakal, I'm the executive director of Swiss Bear. Um, and yes, um, there were letters that were mailed out to all of the, um, residents in the affected area, um, letting them know about the street closures and when it was going to be put before the Board of Aldermen. And I had not received any comments from any of those, um, residents.
I was really speaking in reference to the business owners. Are they opposed to this, or are they in favor of it?
The majority are in favor of it. There are four businesses that are opposed, there were twenty-two that were in favor. Not everybody responded. Um, I do have additional information that I think is important information for everybody to be aware of, that on the two hundred block of Middle, I, I, with regard to retail and service businesses, and when I'm talking about service businesses, I'm talking about consumer service businesses like hair salons and barber shops and things along those lines. Uh, Drip IV falls into that category. So on the two hundred block, there are eighteen, um, retail and service businesses. Of those eighteen, thirteen of them closed at six P M or earlier. The requested street closures are not until six P M. In addition to that, um, on the three hundred block, there are five, four closed at six P M or earlier. And on the three hundred block of Pollock, there are two, and they both closed at six P M or earlier. The, um, Rivertown Dance Studio on Stanley Hall, that's a little bit different. Um, Rivertown, they do classes, um, with the exception of one Friday evening a month. They do have an open dance that goes from six until seven thirty at night. But otherwise, on Fridays, their classes are ending at three o'clock in the afternoon. Stanley Hall can, can actually lease out their space on a Friday or Saturday night. The majority of those, those rentals are on Saturday nights for weddings. There are concerns with parking that were expressed in that letter. I have a downtown inventory of parking. I have a map there, I'm happy to leave that map with y'all, if you would like to take a closer look at that. I just asked to get it back from you. Um, I took a look at, um, the inventory that's available, uh, for street parking on, uh, Craven, one hundred and two hundred and three hundred blocks, same for Middle Street. And for Pollock Street, looked at two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, same for South Front and for Broad Street. Also looked at the public parking lots that are available in the downtown, the number of spaces that are available. The number of leased spaces by the city that are available after five P M. Do not include those that were leased for twenty-four hours. Um, and for Citizens Bank, has been extremely cooperative with this, um, effort. And, um, the, all of their spaces are available as well. And people will be able to drive their cars, um, onto the four hundred block of Pollock, be able to take a left-hand turn onto the three hundred block of Middle and be able to access that parking lot. Of all of those parking spaces that are available, there are six hundred and eight parking spaces available just in those locations, and not including any other private lots that exist in our downtown area. And we all know that people park in private parking slots that belong to businesses all the time in the downtown area, but that inventory is not included in this number. Without including that number, we're at six hundred and eight. And I also would just like to point out in general, that in downtown New Bern, in the MSD, there's three thousand one hundred and eighty parking spaces. Of the three thousand one hundred and eighty parking spaces, though, seventeen seventy-six are owned privately. Don't know if that information's helpful.
I think two things too, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the number of dates that you're asking is less than it was last year?
Considerably, by over twenty.
And you also, the committee that was put together recommended a six P M closure versus a five P M?
That's correct, for the very reason that most businesses, if they're not staying open until eight o'clock at night, they are closed down by six o'clock.
I believe you've also made a change on Middle Street, on the upper block of Middle Street, where you're only proposing to close half of the street as opposed to the full block.
Yes, so there's twenty available parking spaces on the three hundred block of Middle Street. Only nine blocking spaces will not be accessible. But you would be able to access the first- But you would be able to access the first Citizens Bank parking lot and park there.
Two questions. The request is to close portions to allow for operation of street cafes along with family entertainment. Perhaps our citizens would like to know what does that entail? Family entertainment?
The only entertainment that would be happening would be if any of the restaurants would be having some acoustical music on the street.
Thank you.
And lastly, I know we discussed previous-
I'm sorry, there are games. I'm sorry, there are games. We do have, we do have games that are part of, that were purchased by a combination of Swiss Bear and downtown businesses. And the downtown businesses will put out cornhole boards and Parks and Rec brings out large scale chess boards.
So this is in conjunction with Parks and Rec?
Yes, Parks and Rec does bring those out.
Okay.
The two chess boards. The businesses bring out the the cornhole boards.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Last question is, I know we talked previously about the the possibility of developing a policy for street closures. Where are we on that?
So we we do have a policy on street closures, and that is vetted by Parks and Recreation, and it's brought to the governing board. And the conversation really revolved around determining how those streets are closed, whether or not we do a poll of the various businesses to to look at a majority of businesses or whatnot. And my comments have been, that's not something that needs to fall in staff's hands. I can see that going wrong in in a major way. I think that in reality, I think the easiest thing to do for this is once staff does their proper vetting, following the ordinance that we currently have in place and the guidelines they have established to bring this to the governing board to determine whether or not you would like to see a closure or not.
Could could I, I don't know if you have this answer or not, but I'm looking at the sheet that shows the yes and no's. I know that for one, Carolina Creations, the city manager, I met with the new owner there last week, I believe. And when she found out that it was six P M. closing, she said she had no issue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So she had no problem. You could probably cross her off. Tom's Coins, isn't Tom closed by six o'clock on Friday nights?
Yes.
Okay.
Snapdragon has closed studio and is generally closed. Sometimes she will stay open for for street closures.
I I think the the conundrum here is obviously a difference of opinion. I've heard from some folks that feel like it's unfair for the street to be closed, for restaurants to be able to basically expand their business and have more customers and increase their revenue. And I think, Ms. Attorney, you'll have to correct me, but I don't believe that a business that sells a retail product has the authority to put that product outside and sell based off of our current ordinance. It's only to serve food based off of what your boss told me. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. So maybe that's something that we need to look at because if I own a retail clothing store downtown and the street's closed and I want to bring racks of clothes out to attract business in, legally, they can't do that. Although I think it does happen. Just like the signs, every time you see a sign downtown, the Sandwich Board sign, they're all illegal too, which is something we need to address. But my, what I would encourage you all to do is to improve on the entertainment aspect, have more activities. I know you're doing some, but if you can do more. And then also, I think Alderman Brinson may be alluding to this, but invite food trucks to come in. Because I can tell you, I'll I'll be honest, the overwhelming majority of the comments that I hear from citizens is they enjoy the street cafes. They want to see those continue. They enjoy them. They don't like them in the middle of the summer, which you've addressed that here. But they've also said that if they come down, maybe they don't want to eat at one of the restaurants, but they do want to browse and shop. And if there was a food truck there, it would invite them and more people to come down and participate. So if there's a way that we can find to encourage that, that's what I would recommend.
If it's the will of the board, we'll be happy to try to arrange for some food trucks. I would suggest that they be simple grab and go food for people with young children, maybe, you know, hot dogs or slices of pizza or something like that. Something that is, you know, maybe a little bit more affordable for young families with children. Be happy to try to arrange that.
And so you would reach out to the vendors or how would they know to contact you?
Well, there are, people would be able to contact, to contact me or Anne Marie Byrd, who works with me. And we also have a list of vendors and I, the city has lists of vendors that they work with some of their events. And I could also see what options there might be that I I don't currently have information on.
Thank you.
Any further comments? If not, what is the pleasure of the board on item number eight?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt a resolution closing specific street streets for downtown street cafes and entertainment with the caveat that they be allowed to solicit food vendors, food trucks in addition to the closure. Second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor? Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with T A Loving Company for the Stanley A White Recreation Center project. Mr. Hughes?
So I'd like to to bring Chris Volcano. He is our representative with CPL Architects and Engineers to give an update on on what the negotiating process has been. And go from there.
Good evening, everybody. I am Chris Volcano with CPL Architects. So I believe at the last board meeting, you all were presented with T A Loving Company as the apparent little bidder. At this point, we have entered into contract negotiations with them. They have since provided their affidavit C and the references which we're currently reviewing right now. And we are moving forward towards a mobilization date with them. Based on where we are with our permits and outstanding items and the contracts that still need to be executed, they're anticipating an early July to mid-July mobilization date to get started. And that that's part of their availability, part of us being able to get the contract signed and executed, as well as get the necessary permits once we have the contractor on board. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have. At this point, we we are awaiting feedback from T A Loving on the contract. The city has reviewed it, given their edits, so we're just waiting for T A Loving at this point to to do the same.
Board have questions?
I have two questions, but these probably are better for the city manager. I saw on the contract, we decided not to take two of the options on there, one of them being a Stanley White history wall.
That's correct.
What is our plan for doing that?
Instead of using a third party to do this, we're going to contract separately with a design firm that specializes that. We're going to be able to save a little money doing that. Second thing was also landscaping. We're going to be able to use our public works of Parks and Recreation to do the fine grading, install the sod, plantings, and things to be able to save money on.
All right, thanks. That that's what I assumed, but I wanted to make them facts.
Yes.
Your word. So the next time you come back to us to speak with us, you will be able to bring us a PowerPoint to show us some action?
I hope so.
Okay, looking forward to see that.
Sure. Yeah, no, we're we're hoping that once they get mobilized, that things should move pretty quickly. I know that the the house that is currently located on the site, I think, is is about to be relocated. So things are already kind of starting to move. But yeah, once we, once we get some photos and everything, we'll definitely be back to share.
Looking forward to see that.
Also, the, again, our citizens are extremely ready to see this project take on form. Would you restate that timeline again?
Sure. So at this point, the the city has reviewed the contract. T A Loving is in possession of the edits. They're reviewing it with their attorneys, and we're hoping to get that back in the next week or two. And then from there, we have a few outstanding permit items with with D O I and the the state fire marshal. They want to see the shop drawings for the exterior of the building, as well as the entry canopy and the steel involved with that. So once the contractor's on board, we're going to submit those drawings that are provided by the contractor to D O I to get their final approval. And once we get their final approval, we can get the permits that we need and we can kind of move forward into mobilization. So they're anticipating, based on that timeline and the review periods, that we're looking at an early July to mid-July timeframe.
And I'm sitting here, but it says the draft contract indicates the project is to be completed fifteen months from the date of commencement. So if we're talking perhaps July for permits and all the other intricate details and the house being moved, we're hoping to, did you say begin in July or?
Yeah, they they would begin work and and groundbreaking in July, yes.
In July, okay. And I agree with Alderman Kinsey. I'd love to see that in a presentation that's that all of us can lay eyes on.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Once we, once we get some photos and and they make some progress on site, we'd be happy to come back and present it.
Thank you.
Foster, I have a question. The sixty four, sixty four, I think it was sixty four, almost sixty four point five thousand dollars for additional basketball goals?
So-
A a a traditional two gym, a two, two court gym has has your main goals on the long, then there are also four goals if you're playing half court sideways. Their proposal did not include four goals. We wanted to include that so you would have a full gym experience for for events and activities. So that was not included. That was one of the alternates.
So expensive basketball goals, I agree. So Foster, last meeting, I thought that we voted on this, but did we just vote to say, let's move forward? And this is the actual contract?
That's right. That's correct.
So they're still reviewing the contract?
That's correct.
So do we need to approve this if they're still reviewing it?
So you can speak, you've you've had conversations with the architect, I mean, with the contractor. You anticipate any issues?
We we don't anticipate any issues at this point. We haven't heard back yet, so I I can't say for certain. But I think at this point, we'd be just looking to, if if everything came back, when we're all clear, they agree with everything that's been proposed in terms of the edits that we move forward and execute the contract.
So any substantial changes that they come back to and said, hey, it's going to take us twenty four months versus fifteen, that will be brought back before the board?
And this is a standard A I A contract, which spelled out the the little bit amount, any, any fees that would be paid in 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 terms of if this took longer than the fifteen months and just the general, general items in that contract.
And the cost stays the same?
Cost stays the same, that's correct.
Are you sure of that?
Sure as I can be, yeah.
As you know, tomorrow, the price can change.
Yeah, it always does. Yeah, we, we actually have been talking to our cost estimators and, yeah, every month, you know, the costs are obviously going up and up. I mean, last year, we were anticipating a one and a half percent per quarter in terms of like the the escalation that we were using to to price out projects. And now we're we're closer to one percent per month. So, yeah, every day it definitely goes up.
So we locked in?
Yeah.
Because we have experienced that, you know?
Yes.
It's pleasure of the board on item number nine.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with T A Loving Company for the Stanley White Recreation Center project.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Finally, yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number ten. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Moffett and Nichols for resilience, design, and permitting consulting services. Mr. Seberg?
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. In December twenty twenty one, the North Carolina Land and Water Trust Fund selected the city of New Bern as a grantee to receive an innovative storm order grant to perform storm order improvements affecting the Duffy Field Canal. The state will be, the state funding will be used to design a storm order project at Henderson Park based off an approved conceptual plan that will be presented in the June to July timeframe. The city did publicly advertise the request for qualifications starting on March third, twenty twenty three. We held it open for a period of one month. And then city staff, a total of three city staff from different departments reviewed each response and rated appropriately based off of the valuation criteria and the request for proposals. Moffett Nichols was the top rated at two eighty one out of a possible three hundred total points. So staff has requested, or staff recommended, recommends the board consider approving the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter negotiations and execute a contract with Moffett Nichols for this project.
Board have questions? It's pleasure of the board on item number ten.
Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Moffett and Nichols for resiliency, design, and permitting consulting services.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor? Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Item number eleven, consider adopting a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Area Day Reporting Program for Youth at five hundred Fort Totten Drive. Mr. Charles?
Good evening, Gordon Mayor. This is a renewal request from Area Reporting Day from the program director, Barbara Lee. This has been an ongoing annual lease, and she is requesting to do another year renewal on this lease. The terms of the lease have not changed from the prior year. She has been a good tenant in in standing with the term to the lease the prior years, and I don't see any reason why we shouldn't recommend that she be able to renew this lease with us.
Board have questions?
Well, I just want to make a statement about Area Day Reporting for those that don't know anything about that program. Essentially, what they do is when students are suspended from school somewhere here in Craven County, Area Day takes them in, and they do have a teaching assistant from Craven County Schools who helps them with their schoolwork so that they don't fall behind if it's a short term suspension. But they also take long term suspensions too, so in order to keep them going. So it it's a worthwhile cause to me. Just wanted to give a little bit more information because I don't see a representative from them here.
And I believe, someone correct me if I'm wrong, I think someone else is helping, Ms. Barbara Lee now. There's a new, there's a new individual that's helping with that.
Lester?
Yeah, Straight Horn.
Lester Straight Horn, pastor, he's helping there as well.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board for item number eleven.
Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Area Day Reporting Program for the youth for five hundred Fort Totten Drive.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, George. Looking at item number twelve, appointments, I did not see any in the package. Does anyone have an appointment tonight? Okay, we move on to attorney's report.
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. City manager's report?
Got a few things, a few things for you. I want to remind you that the annual Footloose on the Nuis summer concert series
returns this Friday night to Union Forest Park. The Carolina Dreamers will kick off the season. We've got a lot of great bands. That takes place at 6:30 PM. Should have a good time to welcome the Memorial Holiday, Memorial Day Holiday. Also, our Aquatic Center and Splash Pad open up this weekend as well. Colleen is working to put a little PowerPoint up for some pictures. Happy to report that the Kisdale House move is in progress. So, the assistant manager took me out there today, and we saw that the house is off of the foundation. So you'll see some pictures in front of you. They were working on putting the wheels underneath the steel beams this afternoon. The plan, as of right now, is for the contractor to move the house tomorrow evening, starting at 7:30 PM. So that will leave the existing property and go down First Avenue, and then we'll head onto Rim into its resting place. So, police will be working to make sure they monitor traffic. Public Works and Public Utilities will be out there addressing other issues that are in the way with the, with the lines and things. I'm sure this is going to draw a crowd, because this has been something that has been talked about for quite a while. So, if anyone would like to come out and watch this, please observe. The public safety officials is there out there. Stay on sidewalks as well, and stay away from the move of the house. But this is going to be a nice historic move, and we look forward to seeing this occur tomorrow night. Also, wanted to let you know that we are having an MSD meeting this Thursday at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. And the purpose of that meeting is to, to inform the property owners within the MSD of a proposed committee. We talked about potential plans with the governing board during workshops, so we're going to mention a potential committee makeup to, to the property owners, get their feedback as well, and talk about potential projects. Then we want to also get feedback from those independents on other potential projects that they would like to see within the MSD.
Foster, on that, I'm sure Alderman Preo knows this, there is a downtown business council meeting Thursday night. They canceled it? Okay.
They sent out the notice this afternoon.
Okay, alright, good. I would, I was going to suggest that, since there was a conflict there, that we have another MSD meeting. And I'm not sure that might not be a bad idea. If you're going to put projects in front of folks Thursday night for them to consider, maybe have another meeting a week or two later, just for, or at least provide them the opportunity to give feedback on what they would like to see.
And the final thing I have, really right before the, the board meeting started, we received an email from the North Carolina League of Municipalities. In front of you, you'll see some information on extraterritorial jurisdictions. And Senate Bill 675, which is land use clarification and changes, proposes eliminating municipal ETJ statewide. So I'm passing this information out to you. If you support the MS, the ETJs as they currently are, that we have, it's important that we reach out to, to our elected officials and let them know. If you don't have an opinion one way or the other, that, that's fine as well, but I wanted to bring this to your attention.
Can you give us that bill number again?
It's Senate Bill 675, land use clarification and changes.
Are they, I think the email that I read asked us to take some sort of action on this. So, I would maybe make the suggestion that staff draft a letter that would support not moving forward with this bill. And then that would allow us some time to review this, because I think it needs to be turned in tomorrow.
Didn't the email say the vote was tomorrow?
Yes. Do we know what time, or we? So I would say this board, take, take this brief home, review it, and if you feel strongly one way or the other, let the manager know, and if the manager gets some support from the board from four or more, then we can send a letter on city letterhead that basically says, we stand in opposition to this bill, unless anyone opposes. Okay.
Before you move forward, sir, because I just got this, what are, what are they asking us to do?
The proposed bill is to eliminate the ETJ. So local government would no longer have the authority to have an ETJ. It's basically the state taking that away from local authority.
From the municipalities, okay. So then, if that's something that this board, we agreed to do, then that means that we'll be getting rid of all of the ETJs?
Correct.
We'd be required to. It couldn't be our choice.
I mean, I could go ahead and tell you my stance. I'm opposed to this bill. I don't really need to review it anymore. I've already looked at it. Regardless of what you feel about ETJs, I don't think the authority should come away from local government. It should stay here. It shouldn't be dictated by Riley.
You'd like to give direction now? If there's a consensus, we can.
Alderman Brinson is opposed to the bill as well. Alderman Best?
I need to, I would like to review a little more.
Alderman Kinsey's opposed. Opposed. Alderman Royal?
Opposed.
Alderman Preo? Alright, so you got a strong number that's opposed.
We'll get it out first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's it for tonight.
Alright. New business, starting with Alderman Preo.
I have nothing to say.
Alderman Royal?
Just a quick question, and I think we ask this in every meeting. Could we get an update on the resurfacing of the streets in the Duffy Field community? I think that we're asked that every day by citizens, and hopefully they're listening in today, and they can get some clarity as to what to expect.
Yes, I was going to ask the same question.
Yes, now, I discussed this earlier with Alderman Best. We're moving forward, we do not have a mobilization date, nor a contractor selected, but we are pressing to get that timeframe down. As soon as I have a mobilization date and a contractor on-site schedule, I will let everyone know. They'll go out through social media. In the meantime, we have public works crews scheduled to go down there and start some of the fine grading ahead of the contractor on Thursday.
So this is outsourced, it's not in-house?
Yes, ma'am. This, this much pavement is outsourced, yes, ma'am.
So why is it taking so long?
Capacity issues within our department and with contractors.
What do you mean within your department?
We have a lot.
Can you elaborate, please?
We have a lot of projects going on right now.
I'm sorry?
We have a lot of projects going on right now, through ARPA funded projects, and FEMA, and additional things, and we're a little short on staff, filling all our staff roles, but we're working on that.
So, so at what point are you with hiring employees?
We are, we are actively working towards that.
So you have no timeline or anything that you can give the citizens right now that live within?
I do not have a date that I can be assured of to say that this is going to be moved in.
So do you need some additional help to expedite this process of hiring some employees?
We are working, we have been working with the assistant city manager and HR to facilitate that. But the job, the job pressures on every industry, especially in the construction right now, are very similar to the pressures on employees recruiting in our department, since we're mainly construction oriented. The demand for those people is very high right now. So having the availability of vast numbers of applicants, or to attract them, is not just a difficulty with our department, but it's a difficulty throughout the construction industry right now.
So when you say you're going to have crew go over and do some fine grading, is that like?
We're going to take a mortar grader in there, and take some more stone in there, and start the fine grading process, which would be something the contractor would move in to do in the lead-up to the date.
Okay.
So trying to, once the contractor gets on-site, we're trying to be a little more prepared for them to be there to expedite their process.
One final question. So all the work has been done as far as?
The infrastructure work, yes, ma'am.
All of this done?
Yes, ma'am.
So the final phase is just?
Is the surfacing.
Yes, sir.
And the roads, the roads that will be installed, once we're complete. So a lot of those sections of roadway have less than an inch of asphalt cover on them, and what we'll end up with is a two-inch final pavement course throughout those roads. So, we're talking a long-term, 25-year hope for new infrastructure underground, and new surface coat on it that should extend the life of our need to go back into those areas and do repairs.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
George, I know I'm not involved with obviously your day-to-day operation, and I know that there's probably some other projects that you're working on. I would just speak for myself, and the comments and feedback that I've heard, if there's anything that you can do to expedite this one, we would all much appreciate it, even if that means putting some other ARPA projects or something on the back burner until we can get this one addressed, if that helps you at all, because we do, I'm receiving a lot of.
I believe, and I fully understand, our department is receiving a lot of calls from the neighborhood. And I understand those complaints, I do, I do. Anytime you've got any construction, delayed construction, look in front of your residents. It's not a convenience. It's, it's not, it's not a good thing, but I believe, in the end, what they will end up with is a much improved roadway system in front of their houses and businesses.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Royal?
No, sir.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, sir. I've been thinking about the Days Inn property. We all received the appraisal of the Days Inn property, and I'm ready to give the manager direction to put that piece of property on the market. Let's sell it, let's take the proceeds, and help the budget out for this year.
I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I did have a conversation with the attorney and the manager today. And, as you well know, there's a couple ways that the city can dispose of property. One was the Talbot slot, where you put an upset bid out there, and whatever goes, goes. There's no restrictions that the city can put on it. The city attorney has recommended that we could potentially expand our central business district, which would allow us to put some conditions or restrictions on that to ensure that the will of the board is actually followed through and seen made happen on that property. So, the attorney was going to look into that, to figure out what that process exactly looks like, and come back to the board at a later time, versus just the for-sale sign. Because if I knew we could get the appraised value for it, I'd vote with you tonight, put a for-sale sign up. But just because that was the appraised value, I don't believe it would pull that.
But, you know what? You won't know if people don't know it's for sale.
That's true.
I mean, put a for-sale sign up, you know what your asking price is going to be? If it sells, it sells. If it doesn't, then we'll continue doing what you want to do with the.
On that subject, I'd love to hear the voice of the Five Points Business Corridor, and the people that are involved before we move to that level of putting up a sale sign up.
Well, I will tell you that I heard from a few that were not in favor of the Pepsi Museum going there. I do know that. So, I do think it would be important to get some feedback, but I didn't get the inclination from Scott today that it was going to take a long time to come up with that.
No, sir. That's a project that we're actively working on. I hope that we have an update at the next board meeting.
Okay.
And so, what would, how that benefit us? Because we could put restrictions on them, what?
Yes, sir. So if, if we expand.
We can say we want to sell it, someone can put up a grocery store maybe, or something like that?
It allows you to do what Scott generally calls a beauty contest. So you can say, we want this type of good service, this type of use in this space. You can market it to everybody in the world, people who are interested and can provide the vision that you're looking for, can respond. Then you can select from those individuals or those entities that can provide the vision that you want to do, versus the traditional upset bid process where the final highest bidder wins.
So, if you remember, Alderman Astor, that's what happened to the Dunn Building? Because that's how we got the Cub House and the public parking spaces behind there. That was part of that process. Whereas if we just sold the Dunn Building, it would have been sold, and we wouldn't have received anything out of that.
Okay. Well, I just noticed a wonderful asset sitting there, and I'd love to see the money in the bank.
And I'd love to see it benefit the folks in Five Points, which was the original plan with the Five Points Revitalization Committee, is to see something seeded there that would benefit the Five Points community.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I mean, the property's been sitting there, and if we can sell it, we need to sell it. But I think we as a city need to have a part, a play in it, so that we can have those restrictions. But I also want to see that area, I want to see that piece of property revitalize and put some retail business there. So maybe some apartment buildings, or, I mean duplexes or something, or upstairs apartments, downtown retail. But I think we need something that's going to be there, can be an economic driver for our city.
Okay, good. Alderman Kinsey?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
No, Ms. Royal covered it for me, and Mr. Charles explained it well. Thank you.
One, two things. This year's Memorial Day Observance will take place at New Bern National Cemetery on Monday, May 29th, at 11:00 AM. There'll be seating available, first come, first served basis. Mark Sandigan, chairman of the Veterans Council of Craven County, will be officiating. And we will also have a guest speaker this year, Dr. John Byrd, from the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency in Hawaii. So again, our Memorial Day Observance will be Monday, Memorial Day, in New Bern National Cemetery at 11:00 AM. And then the last thing I want to announce, we'll have a Ward Six Town Hall with myself, the mayor, and city manager on Thursday, June 8th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We're going to be at Bites on a Board, which is 2025 South Glen Burnie Road. For those of you who don't know where that is, that is in the old Harris Teeter Shopping Center. New business in there. It's actually in the back of Jenna's Just In Boutique, so look forward to that. Again, that's Thursday, June 8th, 6:00 to 7:00 PM, Ward Six Town Hall.
Okay, the only announcement I wanted to make is Saturday morning, there is the, I think it's the Third Annual Mayor Morgan Golf Tournament. It's at Fairfield Harbor. They are still accepting anyone that wants to play. I don't play golf, but I will be there at 8 o'clock to kick them off and show a sign of support. And there is Alderman, or former Commissioner Johnny Sampson's Day and Breakfast. Alderman Best, do you have that in front of you? I believe that is.
Saturday, May 27th, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Very good. Yep, at the Omega Center. So that's Second Annual Commissioner Johnny Sampson Day Breakfast, for anyone that would like to attend. Is there anything else that the city needs to discuss? Make motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.